Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is Council Briefing Meeting of February 18th. The time is 9:32. My name is Debra Juarez. I'm Council President Pro Tem until next week, next Monday, I believe, the 28th. I will start with approval of the minutes. Wait, I'm sorry. Let me take role first. We are joined by Councilmember Mosqueta, Morales, Strauss, Peterson, Lewis. I was going to say Andrew. Councilmember Andrew. So with that, we have three, four, five, six, seven councilmembers present. Let's go through approval of the minutes. The first item on our agenda is for approval of the minutes. If there's no objection, the minutes of February 10th of 2020 will be adopted. Okay. Hearing no objection, the minutes are adopted. I will go to the President's Report. I don't have a President's Report. We were going to start with our state legislative folks, Cheryl Swab, but we will wait until they get here. So with that, we will just go around the table like we normally do and do our reports, starting with me. The next meeting of the Public Assets and Native Communities Committee will be Tuesday, March 3rd at 2 o'clock. We have two parks-related items headed our way. It will most likely be a short agenda. One thing we're doing, and I'm excited about, is we've met with the Talalip tribe, the Suquamish tribe, the Makasut tribe in Snoqualmie. We've already had the Pialup tribe here. Those four tribes are going to come present in my committee. We already had the Seattle Indian Health Board and United Indians. And so what we're trying to do is get our Salas tribes first at committee so our city council can understand how tribal governments work and also be introduced to tribal leadership, which is really key and very important, particularly the Kalis tribe, too, since they have a huge medical facility within King County, and they're doing homeless services and mental health and healthcare and all those other services that we want to leverage and use. So I'm excited about that. We're putting that together. No other city has done that before, so I'm excited. So last week, I attended the Sound Transit System Expansion Committee. I sit on Sound Transit, but I am not on this particular committee, but I went there because we are discussing the opening of 130th Street Light Rail Station located in North Seattle. But as you know, Sound Transit is a tri-county committee with Snohomish, Pierce, and King. And I want to thank you, Councilmember Strauss, for showing up and providing public comment to support 130th Street coming in early at it. That is actually at the same time as the Linwood Link Station, which is supposed to open in 2024. So we are pushing forward to see the North Gate, I'm sorry, the 130th Street be built at the same time as the Linwood Link. I had an opportunity for, to talk to all the Sound Transit Board members and also our other elected leaders in Snohomish County and in Pierce County. And I really want to thank the North End folks, all of Seattle North End folks and South, and people from the South, from Snohomish County, that came out in support of public comment. And they were great in asking the Sound Transit and listening to community about this issue of 130th, which I've been working on as a constituent, as an elected, and now on Sound Transit since before 2015. So with that, I'm happy to say they did pass a motion. And so within a year, we will be at 100% design for 130th, and hopefully, we will begin planning and building the station. It will come in earlier than 2031. It looks like we're looking at 2025 or 2026, which is incredible because we know now with light rail coming at North Gate, with the whole reconfiguring of North Gate Mall with OVG and the NHL, with the pedestrian bike bridge that just came in, and now light rail at North Gate, the anticipated ridership is between 40,000 and 50,000. And we've just, we're up to like at least 3,000 units of housing of mixed, low-income, affordable, and workforce. And so what we have is, for the first time, the North, the East and West Side of I-5 will be connected by the pedestrian bike bridge. Needless to say, North Seattle College is very happy because they have 18,000 students that rotate through their, North Seattle College, Northwest Hospital, North Gate. We're anticipating before, North Gate Mall had around 2,000 employees with the NHL Training Center, two new hotels, 1,500 units of market rate housing, two new office buildings. We're anticipating the workforce there alone to be around 4,000. So we have an incredible expansion in density. Some of you weren't here last year when we passed some of our up zones. I had 17 up zones, and every one of them were passed because they were all in those dense areas, which was really important. These were, a lot of these areas were also high displacement and low opportunity. So with these jobs coming, people being able to get on light rail, I think it's everything we've been talking about forever, about transit-oriented development, housing, and of course, transit-oriented childcare. We're working with the developers on that as well. Okay, with that, I will turn to my right and let each of you introduce yourselves and go through your calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, everyone. We have on today's full council agenda one amendment that I will be bringing forward, and I wanted to make sure that folks had a chance to see it. You may have already seen it over the weekend, Council Bill 119656 regarding the transitional encampment legislation. First, I want to thank the Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis, for your stewardship last week. I know there was a number of amendments that you already went through and are considering a handful for today as well. One of those, sad to say, is mine, but it is a minor amendment, I promise, that really just clarifies that the funding appropriated by the council last year is for tiny homes and/or enhanced shelters. And you and I have had a chance to talk about the importance of recognizing that this is not just tiny homes, it really is the suite of enhanced shelters that we're talking about, which is critical, so that people know there's a number of options available to get stabilized and to get housed in the long term. So we just wanted to make sure that that was offered in accordance with the statement of legislative intent that we sponsored last year with the council to make sure that it's clarifying enhanced shelters as well. Our next committee for the Finance and Housing Committee will be on Wednesday, February 19th, that's this week, at 2:00 p.m. This again is another special time. Apologies to my council colleagues who are on the committee. Due to yesterday's holiday, we did have to bump our time, so look forward to seeing you at 2:00 p.m. on February 19th. We'll have four political, sorry, four potential appointees for the Domestic Workers Standards Board, and they will introduce themselves and talk about their experience, but their packets have not been fully processed yet, so we'll only be hearing from the appointees with the vote on their appointments coming up at the potential March 3 committee. We will also have a final vote on the Capital Projects Watch List resolution. We discussed this at our February 6th committee meeting. Thanks to all of you who came and had some great suggestions for additions to the watch list. We'll be bringing forward the amended resolution with your suggestions at our committee discussion. And we did have a deadline, I believe, of last Wednesday close of business. If you do have any final amendments that you're considering, I would like to have those due to Dan Eater today at noon, if possible, if folks are still working on amendments for the Capital Projects Watch List. So thanks to Central Staff and my team for extending that for anybody continuing to work on amendments. And finally, we're going to have a discussion on the future of work with some of our community partners that will close up our committee meeting. And that does it for today.
Really?
Yeah. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I do not have any amendments to add to our conversation this afternoon. I do want to let folks know that we had, we are rescheduling our Community Economic Development Committee meeting until next week. We're waiting on some work for one of our departments. So we're going to reschedule that probably till Thursday or Friday. We will let you know as soon as that is confirmed. We have a Board of Health meeting this week, so I'm looking forward to hearing more about the work that you're doing and would love to kind of carry that forward. I do want to read a statement about a visit that my staff and I had last week. On Wednesday, February 12th, my staff and I toured the new Patricia Clark Children and Family Justice Center that's scheduled to open today. For those of you who may not know the history of community organizing against this facility, community members have been fighting to make their voices heard since 2012, when the levy passed by King County voters misleadingly suggested that the funds would be used to create a children and family justice center. I walked through this facility for a couple of hours, and I was reminded that this is not a family justice center. With the consequences that these children face, we will be forced to reckon with them if we don't course correct. Despite the name change, despite bigger courtrooms and updated technology, this is still a jail, and we are caging kids when we should be investing that $242 million into their education and employment and into their future. I want to remind everyone that in 2015, the Seattle City Council passed Resolution 31614, which quote, "is endorsing a vision for the city of Seattle to become a city with zero use of detention for youth and establishing a path forward to develop policies that eliminate the need for youth detention," end quote. Community members have been calling on elected officials to repurpose the jail and invest that money in community-based programs that are doing preventative work, rather than perpetuating the trauma of a criminal legal system upon children and their families, particularly families of color. Now that the jail has been built, after shutting out the voices of community members, we're left with a massive compound that speaks volumes to how the county is investing more in funding youth incarceration than in equitable education. No amount of positive narrating or euphemistic language can hide that fact. Contrary to the rhetoric, caging kids does not lead to restoration or to redirection. We should call it like it is and skip the euphemisms. This is not a justice center, it is a jail. Caging children is inhumane in our county, just as it is in detention centers across the country that are separating children from their families during the most pivotal moments of their lives. This issue will not be silenced, as this is in direct conflict with the vision that we have set out as a city. We need to continue this conversation on how the city and county can invest meaningful dollars to support children who are Black, Brown, Indigenous, and from historically marginalized groups to abolish the need for these facilities in the first place and actually move toward the vision of zero youth detention that was put forth years ago. The No New Youth Jail Coalition will be having a rally today at 4:30 at Bailey Gatzert Elementary School, which is at 12th and Yessler, to continue to assert that the jail needs to be shut down if the county wants to stop disproportionately harming Black, Brown, Native, and low-income youth. I invite folks to show up in solidarity for the young people and the families who are most impacted by these policy decisions, and to help amplify the voices of community members who have been fighting to make this city a more equitable place for young people of color.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales, and your work on this.
Done.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Council President Pro Tem, Councilmember Morales. Dan Strauss, Chair of the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee. There are zero items from the Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee on the agenda today, zero items from the committee on the introduction and referral. I have no amendments for this afternoon. The next Land Use and Neighborhoods Committee will be this Friday, February 20, next Wednesday, February 26th, five items. The vote on the reappointment of Director Torgelson of the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections. And thank you to council colleagues and the public for allowing us to move this reappointment to the following meeting, as to allow more time to focus on the tree ordinance. There will be two appointments to the Landmarks Preservation Board and two landmarks designating ordinances for U-Dub's Eagleson Hall and the Sunset Telephone and Telegraph Exchange, something I used this weekend. No, joking. Events and other notes. Last week, I attended the reception with the Civil Rights Commission members. On Wednesday, my staff met, attended the Ballard District Council meeting, which had a very informative presentation on the new uses of Webster Elementary School. And separately, I met with the President of the Ballard District Council. I also attended the East Ballard Community Association meeting, which was very informative and very productive. That group of folks just has so many great ideas and is able to build community around reutilizing, repurposing our public spaces to bridge and build community.
Well, Ballard is an exciting place.
It, you know?
Yeah.
It is now.
It is now. A lot going on at Ballard.
We used to have to pull teeth to bring people to Ballard. This week, I will be, on Thursday, I'll be doing a walking tour of small businesses in the Green Lake neighborhood, hosting office hours on Thursday in district like we do every week, because no one should be forced to come downtown to have their voice heard by City Hall. Wednesday, I'll be joining the Regional Transit Committee. And again, seeing that on Councilmember Peterson's agenda and referring to Council President Pro Tem Juarez's comments on the North Gate Pedestrian Bridge, this is just very exciting, having worked on this since 2014. Again, kudos to Senator Fracht, former Representative Justin Farrell, Representative Paulette, Representative Valdez, Sound Transit, King County, North Seattle College. This coming together now is just very exciting.
Yeah.
So that is all I have. Thank you, council colleagues.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Good morning. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem.
Before we begin, let me just acknowledge Councilwoman Herbl. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. Good morning. On today's introduction and referral calendar, we have the climate change additions to our fiscal note that I've introduced with Resolution 31933. This resolution would amend the summary in fiscal note to add two questions about carbon emissions and resiliency to climate change, essentially asking the city to examine future legislation through a climate lens. I do have some amendments to Councilmember Swann's bill to expand the number of encampments, and I, these are based on feedback from the committee of the whole. The overall goal of these amendments is to focus on what works and to honor our new regional approach. Transportation Utilities Committee, on today's city council agenda, we have no items from the TUC Committee. However, want to tell you about tomorrow's committee meeting. We meet on the first and third Wednesdays of each month in the mornings, 9:30. This Wednesday, tomorrow, we have four items on the Transportation Utilities Committee agenda. One of the ones was mentioned today about the North Gate Pedestrian and Bike Bridge. Then we've got some property and grant-related items put forward by SDOT, and we'll vote on a resolution with Seattle City Lights Energy Conservation Target. Last week, I attended the King County Transportation Policy Board, where I supported funding for large cities. Also tried to protect the funding for the Port of Seattle and Sound Transit. Busy week in District 4 last week. I attended the University District Community Council. We talked about the economic displacement pressures facing small neighborhood businesses. I also met with the Public Buildings Reform Board last week. This is this strange, small organization within the federal government that was, that's recommending selling the Archives Building in District 4, which I know is important to a lot of my colleagues here. And I let them know very firmly that I do not support the sale of this. I was very disturbed by their lack of public engagement. They had met earlier that day with several tribal leaders and who also expressed concern about this. So I'm in contact with the Office of Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal and the Office of State Attorney General Bob Ferguson, hoping they can impede the sale or at least ensure the records are kept here in the Northwest. Also met with some residents from Wallingford and the U District about the 45th Street Bridge that connects Wallingford and the U District with the light rail opening up in Brooklyn Avenue next year. There's a desire to have it safer for pedestrians and cyclists to get to the light rail station. I want to thank some community leaders, Cory Crocker, Eric Fisk, Brock Howell, and folks at the Bike Happy Cascadia for their work on this. And I'm communicating with SDOT about this right now. We had our office hours, like we do every Friday afternoon in Magnuson Park. After office hours, I attended the roll call at the North Precinct. Want to thank the officers there for letting me talk with them before they went out to protect and serve in the huge North Precinct geographic area. This week, I'll be on the radio show Space 101.1 FM in Magnuson Park. Gene Godden, former Councilmember Gene Godden, will be grilling me on that radio show. And I'll also be touring the new Roosevelt Light Rail Station this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Madam President Pro Tem. So there are no items on the introduction and referral calendar for the Homelessness Strategies and Neighborhoods Committee. There is an item on for full council, has been alluded to in the remarks of some of my colleagues previously, and that would be Councilmember Swann's Transitional Encampment Ordinance. I do intend to have full council vote on that ordinance today so that we can meet our deadline on making sure that there's predictability and new permitting language so we don't displace any of the existing encampments in the city that have done a really good job in making sure that folks can get inside, get off the street, and proactively engage with services to get in a permanent supportive housing. So I really look forward to that conversation. I want to thank everyone for submitting their amendments in a timely manner. If anyone wants to do some last-minute reviewing, Kedal Freeman wrote up a great memo that he sent out on Friday, summarizing the amendments and laying them all out. So I encourage folks to review that prior to the committee meeting or the council, the whole, meeting this afternoon. Will just flag that I am putting forward a couple of amendments myself, mostly dealing with resolving the leftover security and casework questions from last week's discussion. I believe that Councilmember Peterson has some amendments covering that as well, so we should have a lot of variety to make sure that those questions are answered, and I look forward to our deliberations on that this afternoon. I am happy to make myself available if folks want to drop by and talk through the amendments a little bit more. And look forward to finally considering this and hopefully getting something really good passed this afternoon. So last week, in District 7, we had our third in-district office hour session. We've now held office hours in Belltown, Uptown, and the Queen Anne neighborhood. Again, one of the dominant themes from the office hours last Thursday was traffic calming on 10th Avenue West and Queen Anne. A constituent relayed that they had witnessed the 13-year-old daughter of their neighbor be hit by a vehicle at 10th and Howell, resulting in her leg being broken. She's fully recovered, but that could have been far more serious. Another constituent has relayed to me in the past that a car speeding down 10th Avenue West had flipped over into their front yard. In addition to other, just really serious accidents on 10th Avenue West, there's previously been a traffic calming study on 10th Avenue West that SDOT conducted. The, it's a 30 mile an hour zone, the highest speed that was clocked in that road was 67 miles an hour. This is a really serious concern for me. It's been raised by many, many constituents who are not, not yet organized together. I've recommended that maybe they, they could be, and I'm happy to help facilitate that, to agitate and organize for some action on traffic calming. I've raised these concerns with SDOT multiple times. I look forward to continuing to do so, since it does seem to be a, there's a very steady drumbeat of concern on this particular arterial. So that will continue to be a big issue for me, because I don't want to see any further injuries to pedestrians or bicyclists in that corridor or any corridor in the city, and look forward to continuing the conversation as we all strive to reach Vision Zero in the city. More broadly, we've been advertising our office hours through all of our social media platforms and our, our weekly newsletter, and recently through Google Ads as well, working with Joseph P. on Central Staff to try to boost the circulation of our office hours. I can report that that actually seems to have resulted in a lot of additional signups. Lots of people are showing up, and we don't have any gaps in the signups for appointments. People coming who have never tried to meet with their council member before and didn't know how, or whether it would, would lead to anything, and how excited they are to get their, their issues in front of someone who can take it to, to this briefing table and share their stories with my colleagues and with the departments of the city. And that has been a really great experience. For those watching at home, this week's session for office hours will be in the South Lake Union, will be in the South Lake Union neighborhood. It's going to be at the Cascade People's Center, located at 309 Pontius Avenue North. Really look forward to seeing people turn out and learn the issues of what's going on in South Lake Union. Additionally, I'll be visiting the Cascade Neighborhood Council tomorrow night, which is a neighborhood within the South Lake Union neighborhood, on February 19th. This will be my fourth community council meeting since taking office, having visited Belltown, Magnolia, and South Lake Union. It'll be the sixth for my office, since my district director, Parker Dawson, has also visited the Queen Anne and West Edge councils during nights where I had conflicts, and I look forward to attending those community councils, hopefully this month or perhaps next month. And just making sure that we continue to communicate that we want to be a resource and a partner in government to our community councils and our neighbors all over the district.
Are you done? No? Councilmember?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Sorry. Yes. Thank you so much.
I have a couple points to make. First of all, you do not know how happy it makes me to hear people taking on, those of us that represent districts, that we do have district offices, that we do have a district office hours, and some of us have district directors. It's been, as Councilwoman Herbl knows, it's been interesting watching how, when we went to district representation, where people thought it would be Balkanized and somehow we wouldn't be all working together but against each other. And I think it's become the opposite. I think we all know that we represent the city of Seattle, but we honor the needs of our district, that we have to, it isn't just about the global and the regional and national issues, but also where does that stoplight go? Where does that crosswalk go? Where are those pothills good filled? What's going on with density? How do we look? Because we physically live there, that we need to know that our neighborhood's like the back of our hands. So I'm a big cheerleader of that, as you all know. Councilmember Lewis, I had a question for you. There are nine amendments, and I know three of them are yours, but I want to just ask you in general, if we can talk offline, that's okay, too, but I want to do it for a couple phone calls we got in the viewing public. Of the nine amendments, are any of these specifically dealt with in committee? Or in any way?
Yes.
If you can just flag those for me and some other folks, so we know we have to revisit?
Yes. So the amendments dealing with security and casework had been discussed in committee. There were some potential issues raised, that those amendments did not exactly meet the practices of the current service providers or exactly the language of the Human Services Department. So we needed to spend another week to grapple a little bit more, to make sure we weren't being too prescriptive, make sure we weren't kind of adding a new requirement above and beyond what AGSD requires. So we delayed that conversation. In terms of some of the other ones, most of them, most of the amendments just clean up a couple of issues. One of the amendments, for example, that I'm proposing is to add modular buildings to the definition of the kind of structures that can go in a transitional encampment. That wasn't necessarily explicit, or isn't necessarily explicit in the ordinance as it stands, and it was particularly concerning to Central Staff, given that Chief Seattle Club has recently opened a very well-designed modular shelter in Soto, and wanted to make sure that encampments like that could be included. You know, I, Councilmember Peterson has submitted a couple of amendments that I'd rather have him speak to, but go to addressing some of the same concerns. The substitute bill that is under Councilmember Swann's name is basically just updating the ordinance to 2020, because the, the old ordinance had still been, had a signature line for 2019 and had kind of been formatted as if it was an ordinance in 2019. So that just kind of cleans that up and updates the formatting. Central Staff had offered to put the substitute under my name. I thought it was important that Councilmember Swann be able, since she's done so much of the work, that it continued to be in her name. So it's, it's under Councilmember Swann as an amendment, though I totally concur in it.
You mean in her substitute bill?
In her substitute bill.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'm just letting everyone know now that we have nine amendments to get through this afternoon, and I'm going to ask that all of you be prepared to speak to each amendment and that we actually move through it and have some good civil discussion that is robust, but at the same time, that we're respectful of each other's opinions. Sometimes it gets a little heated, but that's okay, as long as we're kind to each other and we're respectful and we listen to each other. So we have nine amendments to get through this afternoon, and I intend on getting through all two of them, and I'm not going to be here till 5 or 4. I'm telling you that now. We're not doing that. We're going to go through them. So with that, Councilwoman Herbl, who's been smiling at me the whole time.
I'm confident we'll get it done and get out of here by 5 with your effective leadership as Chair.
I have my Lucky Ruth Ginsburg shirt on today.
There you go.
There you go.
So I have two items on the full council agenda, and they're just appointments, so they, we'll go through them very quickly. One is a new appointment to the Community Police Commission, and the other is a reappointment to the Community Police Commission. Colleen Echo Hawk is the reappointment, and the mayor is the appointing authority, and Prachi Dave is the new appointment for whom the CPC is the appointing authority. So those are the only items I have on full council today. I do not have a Public Safety and Human Services Committee meeting this week, although I do have one next Tuesday at 9:30. And then just a couple letters I wanted to talk to you about. Councilmember, sorry, Council President Gonzalez has asked that I, on her behalf, distribute a letter for signature, and this is a piece of legislation in support of a bill before the state legislature. It's House Bill 2567, Senate Bill 2522, it's Courts for All Bill, and it protects all people from war- It's the Courts For All Bill, and it protects all people from warrantless civil immigration arrests at court, prohibits court staff and prosecutors from using state and local resources to report people for federal immigration enforcement, and requires courts to collect data on immigration agents' surveillance of courthouses in Washington. These measures build community trust in local courts, prohibit immigration agents from interfering in local court functioning, and preserve access to our courts for everyone. In both rural and urban areas across Washington, courthouses have become front lines in immigration enforcement. Civil arrests at Washington courthouses, particularly immigration arrests, have created a climate of fear that is deterring and preventing Washington residents from safely interacting with the police system—the justice system. Since January 2018, there have been over 200 documented civil arrests of immigrants at courthouses in over 18 counties across Washington. Nearly 1 million Washingtonians, 1 in 7 people are immigrants. Immigrants and their families are being deterred from appearing in state courts by an aggressive federal immigration force, often acting in plain clothes, that is spreading fear in immigrant communities by sitting in court and arresting people in and around courthouses. This bill will protect access to courts for every Washingtonian and will prevent immigration authorities from hindering the functioning of the justice system that all Washingtonians rely upon. This letter was distributed, I believe, on Friday for folks to provide input. I'm going to distribute it now for signature, and then I have another letter that I'm not going to distribute now, but I intend to do so at 2:00 PM today at full council. And this is a letter that you received, I believe, on Saturday this weekend. Actually, I take it back, it was on Sunday. And this is a letter regarding the ongoing negotiations between the Executive and the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program for funding. The letter itself is a follow-up letter to a letter that the Public Safety and Human Services Committee sent in February. We started off as a letter from the committee that has oversight of the LEED program to the Executive, and because there remains a troubling stalemate, this letter is from the full council. It asks both for more information about HSD's conversations with LEED, proposes a contracting approach that will allow LEED to continue funding. And just as background, the council allocated and the mayor signed a 2020 budget that included new dollars for LEED so that they can not only right-size their caseload, they could deal with the backlog, but they could also expand the program, as so many stakeholders in our communities have asked for the program to be expanded. Negotiations between HSD and LEED, again, are reportedly at impasse. We had received a response from our committee letter, the letter from the Public Safety and Human Services Committee a couple weeks ago. I think it was February 27th, and it was actually—felt like we were moving in the right direction. And that letter had proposed releasing funding in a Phase 1 allocation, a Phase 1 contract, funding sufficient to both right-size their caseload, address the backlog, but unfortunately, it would not allow them to take on any new referrals. New referrals is what makes LEED such an important program for our communities. New referrals are both contact—so, sorry, social arrest referrals from SPD as well as social contact referrals from our business district stakeholders. Without the ability for the program to continue to take on those types of emerging public safety issues, LEED is not going to be able to function as it is intended to function, which is, again, a public safety program that is intended to address emerging public safety issues. They can't simply deal with their existing caseload and a backlog of social contact referrals and not be able to also address the emerging public safety issues that our communities are identifying. So the letter itself proposes another slight modification on the suggestion from the Executive in the Test Colby, February 27th. It asks that the Executive consider a proposal that does all the things that the earlier memo suggested, address the backlog, right-size the caseload, but also sufficient dollars to allow for some expansion of LEED to address these emerging public safety needs. I'm hoping that our efforts to both reasonably address what our communities are insisting that we take action in addressing, coupled with a recognition of the Executive's reasonable desire to continue negotiations with LEED around performance metrics, hoping that this this letter will be received in the spirit of compromise and responsibility for public safety that I think is so, again, so critical to our communities that we all represent. So I will have that at 2:00, and happy to consider any amendments to the letter that you all received on Sunday.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbl. I just want to add, you're talking about the draft that you gave us that stated February 18th that we got, correct? That's the letter you're talking about?
The—
We got a packet that stated, Dear Mayor Durkin, February 18th, 2020, then with the attachments and the emails dating back to January 20—
Correct.
—January 28th.
That's correct.
Okay, so this is the right one?
That's right.
Okay, good.
Sounds like we might need to change the date, but yeah, that's the right one.
Okay.
And then the last thing I have is I just wanted to talk a little bit about an upcoming meeting that I have in District on Friday that I'm really excited about. It's a meeting with the principals of both Denny and South, some PSTA leadership there, and folks like the Seattle Neighborhood Group, Seattle Police Department representatives, the City Auditor's Office, Department of Neighborhoods, and the—some representatives from the Teen Life Center across the street at Southwest. And this is to talk about trying to apply a model that's been very successful in Rainier District, Rainier Beach, a beautiful place for youth, and model it in South Del Ridge. In November, I sponsored a budget action requesting that the Department Neighborhoods and the Safe and Healthy Community Subcommittee of the mayor report back to council by April 3rd on next steps and funding needed to replicate this model in Westwood and South Del Ridge. And this upcoming meeting that we have is a step towards that, and I'm excited to be able to work with leaders in my community to replicate evidence-informed strategies to identify and address some of the place-based causes of youth victimization and crime at hotspot locations, using positive behavioral intervention supports, crime prevention through environmental design, safe passage activities, and youth and neighborhood engagement. That's it for me today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbl. Okay, so it turns out that there was a miscommunication. We're not going to hear from our lobbyists this morning. So with that—
One more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I just want to remind folks, especially in my community, that this Wednesday, Sound Transit will be having a public comment period regarding their fair enforcement policies. It's going to be a community meeting at El Centro de la Raza from 6 to 8 Wednesday evening, so I would like my community members to please come and make sure that Sound Transit hears what you have to say.
Thank you, because I sit on that committee.
Yes.
So thank—on the Rio Committee, the Rider Experience and Operations Committee. And we've been looking at this, and we want to thank Councilmember McDermott did some really good work, and we're going to continue that. So thank you for announcing that. So with that, we are going to—I'll see everybody at 2, and if—I'm guessing everybody's heading south—
Yeah, right.
To your district?
Of course.
No. I thought it was in Rainier.
There is—
Oh, for the mayor's—
It's Rainier, isn't it?
It's, yeah. I thought it was in your district. Okay, that's what I was saying. Okay, we're going to head south to District Number 2 to hear the mayor do her State of the City address. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.